Good evening. Call to order. Today is April 27th, 2021, and this is the start of the Hanson Board of Selectmen meeting. In accordance with Governor Baker's recent order reducing the number of individuals allowed to congregate at any time to 10 due to the spike in COVID-19 cases, this evening's meeting is being held remotely with reasonable access being afforded via live stream courtesy of Whitman Hanson Cable Access Television Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. We will now be going into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel pursuant to Mass General Law C30A S21A2 to wit treasurer-collector. We will reconvene, I'm sorry, we will reconvene an executive session to return to open session at 6:00 PM or upon the conclusion of executive session business, whichever comes first. Motion is made by-
Mr. Chair, up. And I will second it.
Second by Mr. Hickey. Roll call. Wes?
Yes.
Jim?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Well, now an executive session. Okay, we just finished up with executive session. Laura, would you mind doing the public announcements in upcoming meetings for us, please?
Okay. Are you guys able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine.
Okay, alright. The Town of Hanson 2021 Street Listing Books are now available for purchase by appointment at the Town Clerk's Office for $10. Call 781-293-2772 to schedule an appointment. Early voting, the Town of Hanson will offer in-person early voting for the May 15th Annual Town Election at Town Hall 542 Liberty Street in the Town Clerk's Office for four days, starting Monday, May 10th, and ending on Thursday, May 13th. The hours for early voting at Town Hall will be as follows. Monday, May 10th, hours are 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM. Tuesday, May 11th, hours are 8:30 AM to 7:30 PM. Wednesday, May 12th, hours are 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, and Thursday, May 13th, hours are 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM. Absentee and early voting ballots are now available at the Hanson Town Clerk's Office for the annual town election being held on Saturday, May 15th. We are encouraging all voters who would prefer to vote by mail for the May 15th election to do the following. Please download an application for either an absentee ballot or an early ballot. Once you have completed and signed either application, please either mail to Town Clerk 542 Liberty Street, Hanson, Mass. 02341, or scan the application with signature and email to townclerk@hanson-ma.gov. The Town Clerk's Office will mail you a ballot, which will need to be received back to the Clerk's Office by Election Day, May 15th, 2021. For more information, call the Town Clerk's Office at 781-293-2772. Childcare will be provided for parents of children aged 5 to 12 who wish to attend town meeting next Monday evening, May 3rd, at the high school. There will be a sign-in table near voter check-in, and children will be watched by the YMCA staff in the student dining area, which is in close proximity to the gymnasium. Volunteers are needed on the following committees: Facebook upkeep committee, Conservation Commission, associate members, Cultural Council, Disabilities, Highway Building Committee, Historical Commission, Memorial Day Patriotic Observants, and Memorial Trustees. Applications for appointment and info on the committees are available on the town website at www.hanson-ma.gov. Upcoming meetings: Monday, Board of Selectmen, Monday, May 3rd, 2021, at 6:30 PM at Whitman Hanson Regional High School Gymnasium, meeting before town meeting to act on any items as needed then a town meeting. Board of Selectmen, Tuesday, May 4th, at 7:30 PM at the Whitman Hanson Regional High School Gymnasium, provisional, only if town meeting extends to a second night. Attend town meeting and act on any items as needed, and that is it.
Thanks, Laura. Okay, first, under new business, appoint Kate Federoff of Mead Talamin and Costa LLC as Town's Labor Counsel for an indefinite term. So, I put this on here. We've had, since Leo Pelican left, we've had some issues, I'll just say, with Labor Counsel. The past six weeks or so, I've been working with Kate regarding John's stuff and also Lisa's stuff. And I just really feel that we, you know, with Lisa coming on board, that we need to have some direction with Labor Counsel. Kate is great, you know, she gets right back to me, or gets right back to us. She explains things so you can understand it in layman's terms. And, you know, in working with her with these two contracts, I just think it's the right move, you know? If I send something over, she'll get back to you as quick as possible, there's not a day or two delay. And I think with Lisa coming on board, that we just, we need to have some stability in Labor Counsel. So, that's why I put this on, and I will go around to see how you guys and girls feel. Let's start with Mr. Hickey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it's a great move. I believe when Laura and I became Selectmen, when we got on the board, Kate was just kind of coming to the meetings where Jay was backing off and Kate was kind of taking over. So, I definitely agree with the move. You know, everything you've said, Kenny, is true about Kate. And the one thing that I really like about Kate is that she puts it in layman's terms. Kate may remember that with the ballot question we had on the marijuana, people could be confused by it. I wasn't, only because I read it like 10 times. But Kate put it in a, well, I was confused at the beginning, Kate. But Kate put that very important question into simpler terms so that everyone could understand it. And, you know, quite honestly, that's one of my favorite things about her is that, and Kate, forgive me, this isn't gonna come out right, she doesn't talk like a lawyer. She just talks like people talk. And quite honestly, that's, I think that's good for Hanson and good for the people of this town. And that's why you have my support on this one, Kenny.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Laura?
So, I echo much of what Jim said. I think Kate's fantastic. I love working with her. She's very responsive. Folks that we've had in the past have not been. My only concern would be that it's kind of a one-off appointment. I mean, when we went through looking for a new town council, we had gone through, we brought in funnelists, we had a whole process that we went through. We even discussed as a board whether we wanted to have the same council be both Labor and our general counsel. And we had decided at that time that we did not want to do that. So, I know why we've gotten here. I don't necessarily disagree that I would want Kate, but I just question why we're not going through the process of vetting. For instance, you know, our next item up is to discuss town, access to town council, which I assume is because of the bills that we've got. And yet, we're not really doing a cost comparison of Kate versus the others. And I think that's part of our job. And I really can't express how much I appreciate working with Kate. But I think there's the, can she do the job? Do we enjoy working with her? No doubt about that, 100%. And then there's the, do we have, do we have a responsibility to do some due diligence around cost? And do we have some, you know, responsibility to take a look at fee arrangements? A prior law firm, who shall remain unnamed because it didn't work out, had offered a flat fee rate, you know? So, I just hesitate to have this sort of like Band-Aid approach in a way to what is a need. But I think that, you know, I'm also a little concerned because we've got the election coming around and we're likely going to have another Selectman joining us in like two weeks. And I'm just thinking, you know, why are we circumventing the process and procedure? I guess is really more my concern, not Kate at all, 100%. It's just, we had a process, we had a procedure, which was vetting and interviewing and doing a rubric and comparing. And at the end of the day, if Kate comes up on top, then great, we know that we did all of that. But I feel like we've got a responsibility to the taxpayers to, you know, make sure, just like we have with other service providers, that we're getting a cost-effective provider. So, you know, I hope that all made sense.
Good. Go ahead, Jim. I'll go to Jim, and then we'll go to Matt and Wes.
Thanks. And I don't want to sound like I disagree with Laura, but the way it's stated, you know, it says for an indefinite term. Indefinite, to me, means exactly what Laura said. When COVID is completely over, we go through the process with an RFP, like we did before, Laura, where we sat down, we had everyone's information, and we did those interviews, you know, with all the firms that we were looking at. And we did do our due diligence, and we went through the entire process, and we still made a mistake. So, I think for now, with the way COVID is going, we can't do that. And that's why I would agree to, you know, have Kate be the Labor Counsel. And then when COVID is all over, go through the process again, where we can all get together, you know, sit down and go through the real process.
Mr. Chair, if that's the, I did not read indefinite to mean that. I read indefinite to mean pretty much forever, you know, until we decide differently. But if it is our intention to revisit this as a board, that I'd be 100% on, you know, on board with this. I would have no issue whatsoever if, when things clear up at a date to be determined, if we all would agree that we're gonna go through the process, as Jim just articulated.
So, Laura, I truly believe that the town administrator, you know, if the town administrator has a relationship with a law firm and somebody that they like, that they work with, that they're comfortable with, I truly believe that it should be the town administrators. You know, we can look at cost and stuff, but if a town administrator has a relationship, you know, with a firm or somebody, then that's who they kind of should work for. But where John Leaven and Lisa coming on board and kind of just what's been going on, and like I said, working with Kate, I just thought that just to get a little stability there, that this would be the best move. And at any time, we can change and do that, you know? We can do the RFP, you know, what Jim mentioned, at any time. We could do that-
But I'm not saying like, yeah, I'm not saying like I want to put her on trial or anything. I'm saying, like, let's agree that we're hiring her, and at some point, like Jim said, I don't know what that period is. I wish I had a crystal ball and I knew when will be post-COVID, and we can go through all of those in-person interviews and all of that stuff. But that we will do the due diligence. And I hear what you're saying, Kenny, because at the end of the day, it really is mostly gonna be the town administrator dealing with legal counsel. Obviously, we will too, but, you know, and they need to be part of that decision. So, I think that's, Lisa, I don't, I didn't know that you had worked with Kate. So, I guess that's, I thought you guys had different town councils. So, that's good to know that you're comfortable with Kate as well.
Matthew?
Yes, Laura. I had the privilege of working with, not with Kate, but we were on the other side of the table during the Whitman-Brockton, the agreement for sewage. So, I came to know Kate through that, and, you know, always very, very professional, very knowledgeable. And having a town council that's very knowledgeable and responsive is always extremely helpful, especially when something comes up that you need an answer for right away. That's where, you know, that really comes in handy.
Okay, thanks, Lisa. Matt, you with us?
I am. I'll keep it short. I 100% have confidence in Kate and her firm. She's always been a pleasure and everything else that everyone else has had. I see the conflict that Laura speaks of, where we're not doing regimented procurement and stuff like that. But for right now, I agree with you, Mr. Chair. Right now, we're just in a transition here. A financial situation going on right now. I think right now, I think we need to, I think we'd be best suited for right now to continue on with Kate. She has given us a great service in the past, and no reason to steer away just right now. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. Wes?
Nothing to add. Thank you, Kate. Great job working with you. I defer to the board.
Okay, so if there's no other comments, I'm looking for a motion to appoint Catherine M. Federoff of Mead Talamin and Costa LLC as the Town's Labor Counsel.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
A motion's moved and seconded. Roll call. Jim?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Wes?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Congratulations, Kate.
Our condolences.
Thank you so much, you guys. I really appreciate, number one, every nice word that everyone said. It was flattering and it made my day. So, I look forward to working with you all too, especially, I know it's a complicated time right now in Hanson. But I think we're gonna get through it together, and I'm very excited. Thanks so much.
All right. Next up, under new business, discuss and adopt the Town of Hanson's access to Town Council policy. So, Laura, you are right. The reason why I put this on is because of the bills. You know, we've just, we've got to, we've got to have a little bit of direction on this as far as contacting Town Council. In the past, but it was never anything that was in paper, it was always through the town administrator, either through the town administrator or through the town administrator/Chair, anytime somebody had to contact Town Council and get information. So, you know, what I would like is if, you know, if Matt, so I'm not suggesting that Selectmen can't contact Town Council. I'm not suggesting that at all. What I'm suggesting is that, let's say that Matt's gonna contact Town Council, and he's gonna ask Kate for an opinion. I think that me as Chair and John as a town administrator should know exactly what he's asking of Kate. And to go a little bit further, whatever that question is, and Kate answers it, I really think that the entire board should know what's Matt's asking of Kate, and Kate's answer should come out to the entire board. You know, what if Matt's asking Kate for information, you know, last Monday, and then Jim on Wednesday is asking Kate for the same information? You know, then it just kind of gets redundant. I think that the weekends, Saturday, Sunday, after hours, after 5 o'clock, I think if the, if anyone's gonna contact Town Council, I think it should be the town administrator or the chairman. I don't think unless it's an immediate need that during those timeframes, off-hours, that Town Council should be contacted for any reason unless it's immediate. You know, unless it's something that, you know, and that does happen. But I think we really need to scale it down as far as the cost, because the cost is, it's getting up. It's really getting up there. So, I wanted to have, I would like to have a policy in place that we can all look at. When I had mentioned this to John, John says to me, "Well, that's great, Kenny, but what are you gonna do if somebody breaks the policy?" You know? "What are you gonna do? How are you gonna handle that? What if, you know, you guys vote on the policy, and then tomorrow, everything is back to what it was normally?" And I think, and I'm just throwing it out there, I think if, if it's, if the policy is broken, then the chairman should put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and it should be discussed publicly. That's, I mean, we're all adults here, so we're just trying to control the cost. And again, I'm not suggesting that Selectmen can't contact Labor Counsel. I just think that it should be in a controlled manner, where the chairman is aware. If you're talking about the chairman, then, you know, then CC the town administrator. If it's something that you don't want the chairman to know, or if it's something about the chairman, you should CC the Assistant Chair, the Vice Chair, and also the town administrator. So, we just, we've got to figure out a way we can get some control. So, after discussing this with Kate, going back and forth, I thought that this was the best way to do it, by implementing this policy. So, let's go around and see what you guys think. Let's start off with Jim, because you're top on my screen.
Okay, thank you. No, I think it's a great idea. You know, one of the problems we're gonna have, you know, the next fiscal year, is spending. And this is a way to control it by keeping it nine to five. Any questions that anybody would have on a Saturday or a Sunday can obviously wait till Monday morning at 9:00. You know, that's my feeling on it. Other departments, and, you know, it's, and Kenny, I know you mentioned this, it's not just us, it's other departments, other boards. There has to be a process, and that, and you have to keep that process. That's the only way to keep costs down. And I don't want to name, you know, any committee or commission or anything like that, but you can't have a chairman of the Drainage Committee, you know, calling Kate on some kind of crazy problem. That there has to be a process. I believe it should go through the chairman and the town administrator every single time. And if it happens to be a situation with the chair or the town administrator, then you're absolutely right. But, you know, go to the vice chair. But yeah, we need to cut our legal costs big time.
Okay, Laura?
Well, I've got a couple of issues with it. I agree fundamentally with the, with, I think, most things in the ordinary course of business should go through the town administrator and the chair. And hopefully, we will have talked about those things at a meeting in the ordinary course. Of course, this policy also says if you're like working on a project, then, you know, like, and that's already being worked on, like as a subcommittee, then you would be able to continue and work with Town Council on that, and that's fine. Where I get a little hesitant on this is the town administrator reports to us, and the chair and the town administrator tend to have a very close relationship. So, if you've got an issue with the chair, where maybe perhaps the town administrator doesn't feel comfortable pursuing it, and depending upon the timeliness of it, you could run into a political situation where you are stonewalled and where you have got no recourse to do anything to get the legal advice that you need. Now, this is not gonna happen in the ordinary course. It would be an exception. I don't think it would constitute an emergency per se under the, you know, under this policy. But, you know, I'm looking at our legal matters, and two of them are ZBA, nine are personnel, and three are building code issues. I'm not seeing anything that's somebody going off the farm. And, oh, I'm sorry, and then we have the sleeper property, marijuana delivery, and Maquon reuse. So, I don't see anything where we're going off the farm on that type of stuff. What I would expect is that if somebody is not using Town Council properly, I would expect the chair to talk to somebody, one-on-one, not in a public humiliating way, one-on-one. Like, hey, you know, you know, obviously, if like, that's a, if that's like a repeat offender, or if somebody's a repeat offender after somebody's spoken to them about it, then I guess you could do that. But I just sort of think like, how would I want to be treated? And we've all had situations since we've been on this board that we've dealt with diplomatically and privately. And so, I think anytime that you think somebody is not doing what they're supposed to be doing, it behooves us to try to have a conversation privately with them rather than having it in public. But again, that would be up to the chair of the department. I also would like to say, I don't know that it was specifically in here, but it was in another policy that I read. For the, so for Selectmen, I'd like to see it be a little, maybe a little bit more leeway than is here. For the other boards and committees, I would like to see it be a vote of their board, that they are going to seek legal counsel. Because what I've seen is sort of Jim's example, on a number of occasions, where people are perhaps acting on their own accord and perhaps furthering their own interests, but under the guise of a requesting it for a committee or a board or something. And I can't get into any further detail without it really just blowing up. So, I'd like to see that we at least have an indication that it is the desire of the board that the chair of that committee or commission or whatever it be, may be, that they've taken a vote. And again, there are gonna be things that come up at the last minute that, you know, you can't anticipate. Like, if it's a board or committee that's meeting every two weeks, and it's a hearing that's coming up, and they haven't met yet, you know? There's gonna be stuff like that that comes up. I get that. But I would really like to see some documentation indicating that it's the will of the board. So, yeah, and that's it. So, I think it needs to be, I'd like to see this tweaked just a little bit.
Well, as far as committees and commissions, you know, it should be a vote by them, but it still should go through the town administrator.
Did I lose you guys?
Nope. We can hear you, Laura. Can you guys hear me? Okay.
I can't hear you. Oh, boy.
So, yeah, I don't know why she can't hear. So, committees and commissions, it should go through the town administrator, you know? So, they should vote on it. So, that should be a requirement. That should be kind of standard information anyways. Matt, let's go to you and Wes, and then we'll go back to Laura.
Yeah, so I agree that we need to make sure that we control the costs, of course. I don't know, and Kate, please inform us if it is possible or if it isn't possible that we have, that we have a contact log of who's contacting the legal counsel and for what reason. I'd like the idea of getting a summary of what the call was about, who called and whatnot, so the whole board is abreast of all the situations. Because I know that sometimes communication can be hard among the board, and we don't know who's working on what and for what reason. And I think that's the way to kind of move forward, is to kind of have that policy, especially with committees. Because sometimes the town administrator or the chair may know the answer to it. Instead of calling up Kate, they can get a summarized version from the town administrator or our office. So, that's all I have to say on that.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. Go ahead, Wes.
And I would just add, in the last section, I think everyone has a different idea of an emergency. I think that's awfully loose language.
Okay. On Section 5-01, letter C?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Laura, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I like the idea of the log. And unfortunately, I didn't hear anything you said, which is what caused me to log into another phone and, and listen. But I like the idea of the log and I really do like the idea of us all somehow being kept abreast of what we're all talking to Kate about, because there could be duplication of effort, you know, if we don't know what one person's talking about. And I'd also like, I forwarded to you and Greer and John some, a policy that I had seen three or four different towns had adopted. And one of the things that they said, which might seem maybe like common sense, but I think it should be in, you know, in the policy is to have us try to vet things internally before we go to legal counsel, like, you know, ask the town administrator, like, have you had any experience with this? Or do you have any resources that you think we could look at that might give us this answer? You know, because sometimes it's as, as simple as looking up like mass general law or looking at our bylaws, you know, that type of thing. And, and those little things can add up, you know, if, you know, they can just add up. It can be a 10, 15 minute call here and there. But, and I just say this because as part of my job, I do compliance work and I find a lot of times people are very lazy and they won't, they won't try to find the answer themselves. It's just easier to just send a question off than like try to look it up yourself. And so I, I think, you know, if we could kind of bake that into the policy, that we're just expecting people to use best efforts before they go to legal counsel.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. So Laura, what you had made a comment about boards and committees. And what I said is that the boards and committees, that should be a vote by the committee or commission anyways, but that should still go through the town administrator. So I agree that those boards and committees should be on the same page, but through the town administrator. So we have to, so what tweaks do you want made on this? Get your, please.
Well, I think, I'm, I'm just thinking, I had forwarded and I don't know if, I didn't forward it to the rest of the board because I didn't want there to be a deliberation. But I had forwarded a policy that's been, being used by several other towns. And I had kind of checked with like Whitman and Pembroke and I have a person I know in Dayton, sort of like what their policies were. And it's more in keeping with what I had forwarded. So I'm just wondering if maybe, I don't, I don't know if we can forward that, if Greer or somebody can forward that to the rest of the board and we can combine what we've got here with that policy. Because I think some of the things that have been brought up here are addressed in that policy. So we could just pluck them out.
Kate, if you look in your email, the policy that Laura is referring to, she sent that to me Friday and I forwarded that off to you late on Friday.
Yes, I have a copy of that. So I can incorporate from what I heard the others say this evening, as well as taking a look at that document, I can incorporate some of those things and submit another draft to you.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have any more comments on that? We'll have, we'll have Kate revise this and then send it out to the board and we'll take it up for a discussion in May. Okay, thank you. Okay, next up. Discuss the town meeting, possible consent agenda, consent agenda and other town meeting related items. Mr. Stanbrook, are you with us, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So we had, I think we had talked before about consent agendas and we used one back in last July's annual town meeting to try to take some of the, the, the articles that are, you know, more, you know, functional in nature and are unlikely to have, you know, strong opposition or a lot, a lot of debate and try to maybe strip them out of the group so that we're spending most of the time that we're, that we're together, talking about the things that are, you know, everyone wants to talk about and not just the perfunctory stuff. So I, I came up with a consent agenda. I was working with Kate on, on this. And it was, I have a consent agenda for special town meeting and annual town meeting. So I don't know if you want me to just continue on with what we had, but what, continue on with what, what we were talking about and see what the, the board would like to do. But on the, on the special town meeting, it was every article other than article one and article two. So it was articles three through 13. Want to make sure I have that right. Yeah. So articles three through 13 would be on a consent agenda. And again, what that means is that they'll be moved and the, well, we have the moderator on it. Maybe the moderator can explain what the procedural ways that we're going to, would go through a consent agenda.
Or just like last year, I would give a brief explanation of what we're doing and why. And then say that I was going to read off the articles individually, much as I would with the budget. And if anybody wanted to discuss that particular article, we could hold it and then come back to it. Once everything's been accepted, we can return to the held articles. We can discuss it and then take one vote. And so it was a pretty good time saver last year, I think. And, you know, especially where we're going to be in the gym. Hopefully we can minimize the amount of time people are inside with each other, especially if there's a crowd. So I'm, I'm all in favor of this and, you know, especially with the special where, you know, most of those items are not going to have any debate whatsoever.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments on it? I like it too. I think it's, it just kind of streamlines the process. Go ahead, Jim.
Oh, thank you, Kenny. My, my only comment is, you know, Sean's running the show. He would know better than any of us, you know, on, on what needs to be discussed or what's going to pass. And, and I agree wholeheartedly with Sean. You know, it'll just streamline things and get it done, you know, quicker. So, yeah, I'm all for that.
Well, thank you very much, Jim. I was worried you were going to say I talk like a lawyer, which, you know, cut kind of deeper.
Does anybody else have any comments? John, we don't need a vote on that, right?
Uh, no, it's just we would, you know, we had talked about a consent agenda and we were, we're, I just wanted to say that, again, on the special, it was going to be articles three through 13. And on the annual, it was going to be articles one, two, three, eight, nine, 12, and 13. So, I mean, that's where we're thinking and it seemed to move along and we were able to get to the things that everyone wanted to talk about a lot faster, which seemed to, everyone seemed to like, so.
Now, John, do you want to discuss briefly the two changes on the two articles? The South Shore Regional Check and then the other changes briefly to the board notes?
Yeah. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So article two on the special town meeting. First of all, the, the information warrant's already gone to print. So these changes are going to have to be something that are in the motion. Because obviously we can't, it's at the printer now, so we can't get it back. So the two changes are, the first one is that the, on the special town meeting, that the, the motion would, would have to change just on article two to, it would be changing the, the purpose of the recreation enterprise fund. So I, I mean, I'm just going to read that, that the, the way article two would read now in a motion. The, the part that would change is the, I move that the town vote to amend the vote taken pursuant to article seven of the July 29th, 2020 annual town meeting to reduce FY21 recreation enterprise funds, enterprise fund estimated receipts by $39,219 and replace those estimated receipts with recreation enterprise fund retained earnings. So what that means is in the informational warrant, it says it's going into the budget of the recreation department. But the correct motion should be that it's, it's being used as a receipt source. So that'll be something that'll be different from the information warrant that everyone will have. And the motion will be different than that. So that's one of them. And the second, that happened, we, I think that came up today, I believe. Or it might've been yesterday. And the second one was on the annual town meeting. The, the, last night, the South Shore Vocational Technical High School School Committee voted to lower the amount to, I think it was article 15, I'm looking for it here, but off the top of my head, I think it was 15.
So it was originally, it was 18 million?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's article 14. So they, they voted to lower the amount. That's, so the, the printed warrant and the information warrant will say 18,960,537 of indebted in to, of authorized indebtedness. And they voted last night to change that amount to 10,516,372. So that's going to be something different than the, the information warrant that everyone's going to have at town meeting is going to say the higher number. The motion is going to contain the number they voted last night, which is the lower number of 10 million, which is obviously a significant amount. And I, I had discussions with Kate about how that works when a number, when there's that substantial of a change in a, in a vote like this. So I don't know, Kate, if you want to weigh in, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think so, so the, for the purposes of town meeting and to stay compliant with the warrant, it's notice, right? And so the question becomes, and it's, it's really the discretion of Sean, but the question becomes, would I, sitting on my couch, have had a different decision to come to town meeting or not, had I known that information before? So the way I look at it is when you're reducing the number, even if it's to a large degree, probably less people would be interested in the reduction of number than the converse where people are, where you're increasing the number, although it's allowable. So, so where the increase in number is, is large, then you could have a scope issue and it wouldn't be allowable. But here where they're decreasing the number, you're, you're in a much better place to say, sure, that's within the scope.
Okay, good. Excellent. Any more questions on that?
I'm sorry, one, one other thing quickly, Chair, Mr. Chairman, is I think it worked well last time to have the moderator read all the, all the motions. That seemed to move things along. So we're thinking of doing that again. And we're going to have a walkthrough on Monday at noon. I don't know if the moderator is available. I hope he is. And we could try to iron out what, what's going to happen that night next Monday.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
I just wanted to confirm, I mean, there was a little bit of confusion about this at, at the last July, well, when we held it in July. Just, I want to confirm that the, the budget will be, will be again voting on the finance committee's numbers. And that if there's any proposed changes to those numbers, then it should be done by amendment. There was a bit of confusion. I just want to confirm.
Okay.
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, John. I'm sorry.
The, yeah, the answer is, is yes, we are going to be voting the, the motion is going to say as printed in the finance committee recommends column of the annual town meeting information warrant. So just remember that there's, Mr. Chairman, that there's going to be two articles. Article four is if the override doesn't pass, article five is that the override passes. So just have to make sure that people are looking at the right, right chart.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll, I'll explain that as best as I can.
Does anybody have any questions for Sean or Kate for that matter? If not, we're going to let them go. Thank you, guys. And we will see you both next Monday. Kate, I'm sure we'll be talking to you sooner. Thank you very much.
All right. Bye, guys. Thank you.
Wait, before you leave, selectmen hickeys waving.
No, I was just waving goodbye and thanking them both. That's all.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Be so serious.
So next up, the, the capital improvements review and possibly vote on the FY22 capital improvement committee matrix. We're going to vote on that at town meeting. Just because that's what we had printed in there, we already decided to do that. So when they read, when people read that, they're going to expect us to be voting on the matrix at town meeting before we start. So we'll table that until next Monday, okay? So next up on the new business is Arbor Day proclamation. Matt, you with us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would you like to discuss the Arbor Day proclamation, please?
Yes, sir. So Hanson, a couple of years ago, became an Arbor Day, a Tree City USA candidate. Last year, we had lost that status. So I would like, one of the things that we have to do is proclaim April 30th Arbor Day in the town of Hanson. I believe in your Dropbox, you will see that proclamation. I do not have it in front of me as I am currently traveling. But that is one thing that we have to do. And Friday is Arbor Day and I would like to continue to try to hold on to our status. And that's all I have to add.
Yes, I do have it. Does anybody have any questions for Matt? If not, I'm looking for a motion to proclaim April 30th, 2021 as Arbor Day in the town of Hanson. And I'd like to urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands.
I'll move that motion.
All right. That's moved and seconded. Roll call, Jim.
Aye.
Laura. Matt.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, next up, appointments. Discuss possible candidate for the building commissioner. Mr. Stanbrook, would you like to lead us into that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you're aware, the building inspector position here in town will be vacant soon due to Robert Curran's retirement. Article 212, section 8C of the town bylaw states that whenever possible, promotion or hiring shall be from within the, within the town departments. So we, we posted the job opening as required and we received one in-house candidate that we interviewed for the position of building inspector, recently building commissioner Bob Curran, who's on the call right here. Interim town administrator Lisa Green, Greer, and I interviewed Kerry Glass of Hanson. Mr. Glass is a longtime Hanson resident, who has been the alternate building inspector here in town since last year. He served as the town of Hanover's part-time local building inspector for a year and a half prior to coming here to Hanson. Mr. Glass has 37 years of experience in the construction industry and he is a certified local, local building inspector. He's worked with Permanize online permitting system, and that's what the town uses. He's, he has experience in enforcement of the building code and is committed to taking the required classes to becoming a building commissioner. So I would recommend that the town extend an offer of employment to Kerry Glass of Hanson as the building inspector effective May 3rd, 2021, subject to completion of all pre-employment processes and successful salary negotiations. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Stanbrook on that? Laura?
Yep. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm having weird intermittent computer problems tonight, so I apologize. So, so I hear that he is not currently a licensed building inspector and that he's committed to becoming licensed. Do we have a timeframe for that or?
Can I explain?
Go ahead, Bob.
Good evening, everybody, and thanks for having me here. Kerry Glass is certified as a local inspector. There's two certifications. One is the local inspector and the other is a building commissioner. To run an office To run an office, you need to be certified as building commissioner, however, um, there is a conditional appointment that I would expect uh, would be normal for most candidates, so he would come aboard as a local inspector, a new employee, um, form will have to be sent to the state, and they will give him, like I said, a conditional appointment as building commissioner. He'll have eighteen months to finish the testing to become certified.
Okay, thanks, that's helpful.
So just to clear it up, Laura, the, he is certified as a local building official, he needs to get certified as a commissioner, and I think that's by design, that's how he wanted to, to move forward.
That makes sense, of course, he, you know, it's not everybody's turnkey, so that makes sense, thanks.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, not seeing any. I'm looking for a motion to appoint Kerry Glass to the Building Inspector Position, what did we say, May second, did we say? Was that the date, John?
It was May third, that's Monday.
Okay, Monday, May third, um, to expire on six-thirty-twenty-two, that's for a building inspector. Zoning Enforcement Officer to expire on six-thirty-twenty-two, Fence Viewer to expire six-thirty-twenty-two. Records Ax- Access Officer indefinite term. Looking for a motion.
Ten, ten, well, I, I, I'll make a motion, but I, I, I just have a question, if Bob's resignation is effective on the twenty-ninth, and we're, we're not appointing this gentleman until the third, who's officially in that position? I, and I know it's like a weekend, but just like if something goes south, what, what, what? Do we have a gap? I just want to make sure we don't have exposure there.
Mr. Curran.
Laura, um, yes, Mr. Chairman, um, part of my, um, my plan is to stay on board for at least a year as the, uh, local building official to help out where I can, and in that case, I would cover for Kerry if he was absent, um, so I think if this board would appoint me as the local inspector as of Friday, um, I could cover if there's any emergencies.
Okay, awesome, thank you. So, uh, so moved, Kenny.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Jim.
Aye.
Laura.
Aye.
Matt.
Aye.
Wes. Wes. Okay, and I'm an aye. Okay, congratulations to Kerry Glass, okay, next up, appointment.
So don't, don't we now need to move to appoint Bob as the local building inspector? I don't know if I'd have got that right, Bob, I'm.
That's next on my agenda.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Okay, next up on the agenda, um, appoint Robert Curran, Building Inspector, alternate from June, give me the date again, I'm sorry, uh, from the June, April thirty, what, what day are you retiring, Bob?
Twenty-nine, twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, so from the thirtieth indefinite, right?
For a term to expire six-thirty-twenty-two, it says.
Yep. The term expires six-thirty-twenty-two, do you have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Jim.
Aye.
Laura.
Aye.
Matt.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. All right.
And Kenny, I'd just like to thank Mr. Curran for helping transition. Thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Yes, Bob, thanks for everything, and, um, we'll be talking.
It's a, it's been a pleasure, and I'll miss you all, thank you.
Okay. All right, next up, one-day liquor license. Juvie Hotwood, Hanson, May eighth, twenty-twenty-one, six P M. to eight P M. Anna Carleen Scanlon Rockland, May sixteen, twenty-twenty-one. Looking for a motion to approve these two liquor licenses.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
We're at school second.
Thanks, Wes, roll call, Jim.
Aye.
Laura.
Aye.
Matt.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Next up, the town administrator and the interim town administrator's report, Mr. Stanbrook.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, just under old business, at the March twenty-third, March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one Board of Selectment meeting, the board authorized me to sign payroll, vendor and withholding warrants on behalf of the board through April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. I signed the following four warrants on behalf of the board since the last meeting. Um, one, a warrant dated four-fourteen-twenty-one, warrant thirty-three V zero-four-one-four-two-one. It's a negative warrant, negative three-thousand-four-hundred-and-twelve-fifty, and that's a void of a vendor check. Uh, another warrant dated, uh, April twenty-second, twenty-one, warrant forty-three for two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars and twenty-one cents, and that's a vendor warrant, and two-hundred-and-five-thousand around is related to May health insurance expenses. Um, another warrant dated April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, warrant forty-three P R. of a hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and three cents, and that's a payroll warrant, and then finally, a warrant dated again, April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, warrant forty-three W H. Uh, for twenty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty dollars and fifty-one cents, and that's a payroll withholding warrant. Um, some new business, so, uh, last week, the Department of Revenue posted the House of Representatives Ways and Means Committee State Aid Budget Proposal. Um, for, for Hanson, the general fund impact is a two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-three-dollar increase in receipts, and it's related to state-owned land. Um, again, if we would get that money, uh, that would be more money coming from the state if the House Ways and Means, uh, Committee amount makes it through and actually becomes law, um, when the process is done, uh, right now, the full, uh, the, the next step after this is the full House votes on a budget. Um, when that happens, then it goes over to the Senate, uh, the Senate will vote for a, a budget, they'll have a conference committee, the House and Senate will get together, um, come up with another budget, they'll send a budget to the governor, the governor has ten days to, um, to veto it, and then the, uh, House and the Senate have ten days to override it, if I remember right, so, um, it's still a long way to go before the budget is, is set. But this is the next step, this is the first time we've had anything happen with the budget since the governor released his, uh, uh, budget amounts, um, in January. Uh, the FY twenty town audit is completed and, uh, put the FY nineteen and FY twenty audits in Dropbox, so you could take a look at them. Uh, fairly dense documents, obviously, um, in the future, the board may want to consider having the town's new auditors come in and present the fiscal year twenty audit, and then talk about letter, management letter recommendations. In the past, you've, you've done that, we didn't do it last year again because COVID had hit just on the, I think it was the week that they were going to come in and do the FY nineteen. And so we've got new auditors this year, it may, might be worthwhile for the board to, to talk with them and, uh, and ask any questions that they might have. Uh, again, our next scheduled meeting, after-town meeting, will be Tuesday, April, uh, sorry, May eighteenth. Uh, again, Mass Department of Public Health, uh, has changed the town of Hanson's COVID-nineteen color from red to yellow. Uh, that, that's good, a yellow color indicates that the town has a COVID-nineteen positivity rate of ten or more cases per hundred thousand of population, or five percent or greater testing positivity rate. Again, more, for more information, you can go to the Mass Department of Public Health website, or it's easier just to go to, uh, our website, uh, uh, W W W dot town, uh, uh, Hanson, I'm sorry, Hanson M A dot gov, I always get it wrong. And just, uh, there's a red banner there that will take you right to the, the Department of Public Health website, thank you. Um, uh, override frequently, frequent act, frequently asked questions, uh, there, they were in Dropbox, if you haven't, you want to take a look at them. Um, uh, the, the chairman used some of the, uh, the responses that I had to the questions that I'd received at our forum that was held, uh, last week, last Tuesday. Uh, and so those are the questions that, that I've been asked, I came up with, with, uh, with answers to them, if you want to review them, and if you have any objections, then let me know, if not, I would put them on the website uh, and Facebook so that the public can see it, so as we go up to, uh, towards the, the override vote on, on May fifteenth. Uh, just, I'm gonna just turn o- over to Lisa Green, our, our interim town administrator, to talk about the schools deregionalization report, uh, but just the coming attractions are gonna be next, the scheduled meeting is, is May third, twenty-twenty-one at six-thirty at the high school gymnasium, uh, as the meeting before town meeting to attend to any town meeting items. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, now, uh, Ms. Green is gonna take over.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, so today I reached out to Andy Pacquett of T M S. Um, and introduced myself, um, as the new interim town administrator for Hanson. Um, we had a nice conversation and, uh, introduced myself, and he is gonna be forwarding me, um, the e- an email with some documents they are looking for, um, I will work to gather those and get them over to him. Um, that's all I have to report, it was a quick conversation, but at least I've reached out and, um, established a communication between the two of us. So, uh, we should be moving forward on that.
Yes, good, Laura.
Um, can, can you hear me again, I'm sorry to keep being like a, a Verizon wireless ad here, but I, I, I keep losing power. Um, Lisa, did you get a sense of when we might be able to start that process and what the timeline from soup to nuts would be for the deregionalization study?
No, he was gonna, um, like, send that to me in an email, um, and I did not see that I had received that yet, so I watch that tomorrow, and if I haven't received it, I will reach out to him and, uh, get that information.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Hickey.
Hey, Mr. Chair, thanks, Laura, I have, um, John and I were talking, uh, just about a week ago about this, I have a date, um, that the firm, um, will be done, um, but I want to contact, um, the seven-member deregional, deregionalization committee we have here in Hanson, um, and give them that information, you know, before I put it out to the public.
Okay, so, so the firm told you when they think they'll be done, and then obviously you guys will look at it and then make whatever recommendations and present it back to the Selectmen. I got you, um, okay, I, I'm just trying to figure out, like, are we talking, like, before October town meeting, or, you know, is that?
Abs- oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, oh, yeah, we'll, we'll be, we will, we will be ready for October town meeting.
Okay, awesome, thanks.
Everybody will have, yeah, they'll have plenty of time to, um, look over the information. But like I said, I just talked to John about this, and I want to get the committee up to date.
Thanks, guys.
Good, thanks. Looking for a motion to, John?
So moved.
So moved.
Too slow on the draw there, Dyer.
Second, bud.
Second.
Too slow again, Matt. Uh, Jim.
Uh, aye.
Laura.
Aye.
Matt.
Aye.
Wes. All right. Okay, and I'm an aye. All right, thank you all for watching and good night, and we'll see you at town meeting next Monday. Have a good night.